Good evening, and welcome to the April eighth work session of the city council. I'd like to stand and let's lead us to the flag. I have an open prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts seeking your wisdom and guidance as we gather for this city council meeting. Blessed be the appendage grass with clarity of thought, compassion, and spirit of collaboration. May the decisions made here today serve the best interest of our community and reflect your love and justice. We also lift up the citizens of Pendergrass, asking for your protection and peace. Help us to work together to foster a community where everyone feels valued and respected. In your holy name we pray, amen. Yeah, the first thing in order, we got some housekeeping to take care of. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of November twenty-fourth, December twenty-fourth, February twenty-fifth, and then March twenty-fifth? Do I have a motion to accept these?
Well, um, I got something to say.
You can't.
Uh, before we accept these, um, can we discuss what procedures we're going to take in the future? Some of these reports have some questionable items on there, and, um, we need to see these invoices and checks before we prove any of these treasury reports from November to February. Let's see if you guys have any.
But I mean, we're doing the minutes right now.
We're doing the minutes for you.
Okay, so as far as the minutes are concerned, I'm fine with the minutes, the treasurer.
Uh, can I, I give a motion then to accept the, the minutes.
Second.
All agree?
Aye.
Aye.
I like the minutes.
You got to vote on them either.
The minutes.
Just the minutes.
Just the reports.
That's true, we need to push it to the council. Yeah, but we do.
I thought we were just discussing, yeah.
Yeah, but I think that's your order of voting. But.
I'm saying can you vote on anything in this work session?
No.
How about it, say that they're leaving the mark, vote, vote.
You're, you're correct.
Also, the minutes would have where the treasury report comes through each month was accepted, so the minutes may need to be amended to, to table. If I can, if you want, we can amend the minutes for the treasury report so that they're not accepted in the minute.
My, my thing was just discussing these treasury reports and seeing what we're going to do in the future and then voting on the council meeting, is that not kind of the way?
Well, what I'm saying is, at the next council meeting, we can have amended minutes for you to vote on.
Yes.
So that's what we're going to.
Vote on anything, if not, sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
And by the way, Father Moore, since I've started my mouth, I'd like to say the December, February, and January minutes, because there was not a meeting, there should have just not, no, no time to meetings for anything where you could look at it, because it should have been a meeting, because it is out of form, not the one for three months. And, you know, I don't know what you're trying to review it. It didn't have a meeting, and it wasn't meeting at all, wasn't another out of form. I'm sorry.
Yeah, what I was trying to, what we were trying to do with the minutes was, what we were trying to do was getting the minutes approved, so we can go to the bank and get Monk Pollard taking off his account.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but you can't do it here tonight, you can't vote on anything in the work session.
Do we?
I understand what you're trying to do.
Do we, do we have the unapproved minutes? Do you ever post that online, or those aren't posted?
We do, they, they should say pending besides them on the webpage, and the, we did have a forum for the March meeting, but if we're not voting on anything at a work session, then, but that would happen.
Well, March would be, can you turn your microphone, we take your, the March minutes.
Well, just, just put it to that, up this way. Put it to that straight up. It's, they're sensitive, so just turn it on and put it so it's, it's straight up. And then point it straight up, that way it shouldn't be directly to sensitive, there you go. Now you're saying we should be able to hear it.
As far as the March, no, we haven't received yet, except that happened. But we're looking at November, uh, December, January, and February.
Although you guys did receive the March. We have a sentence, it's not in any email.
Oh, definitely, yeah, but we won't vote on that.
No, that's fine.
Because, all right, it's fine.
Were there any changes to the treasury reports from the ones that we saw?
Um, I don't, I don't handle the treasury.
No problem, okay.
I haven't seen any changes. And, you know, but I'm, I'm trying to get a better understanding of what's going on with the finances of, of the city.
Who is handling the treasury right now?
There's still Sandy, there's still the, the treasury of that, along with, I guess Rob Russell is still involved somewhat. Uh, you know, we're trying to separate everything away from that, so. Being that he is, you know, going to be leaving at the end of month. Did you want to go over the treasury report or no?
I mean, I, I thought that's what we were going to review, I don't think we're going to vote on anything today, but I'd like to review just a couple of things.
Okay.
Um, that I saw and how we're going to prevent this in the future. So, um, I'd like the council to come up with something on preventing, uh, any money being put in any of these accounts from anybody. Um, I don't think people should be putting their own money to pay the city's bills or projects or anything.
All right, what, what we have started already, with the police department and the road department, we've applied for wax fuel carts. So, no one will be putting their own money into the vehicles and getting reimbursed for that. The object is we're going to the bank, well, we're going to try to go to the bank this week, but, and apply for credit cards for the city, so the police department has a credit card, the road department has a credit card, and the administration department has a credit card with a limited amount of balance, possibly like fifteen hundred dollars to start. So therefore, this stops anybody from taking money out of their own pocket and having to get reimbursed, and everything would be done that way.
Is that fifteen hundred dollars per?
Per cart, it would be per cart.
Per person?
No. The road department's going to get one cart, the police department's going to get one cart, administration's going to get one cart. To start, we'll, we'll do it at fifteen hundred dollars, if it has to be increased, we'll, we'll load, we'll do that. The other thing we're just starting to do is we're going to initiate a purchase order system. So, if they want to do anything, the road department will have their own PO number, the police will have a PO number, and the administration will have a PO number. So, it'll have, and the receipts have to have the PO on it, and when the check gets cut for that amount, the invoice will be attached to the check. So, we're trying to stop any of the stuff that's, you know, happened in the past.
When they, when they create the PO though, right, they just have to have, uh, your approval for, you know, before they can go purchase it, they need to create a PO to purchase something. They have to create a purchase order, submit it in for approval before they can purchase it.
Right, yeah, we're going to, we're going to get a hold of the books.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's the object, okay? So, and then the next thing is, I'm trying to get all the balances from what is on the splash funds, what's available, what we're allowed to spend it on, and how much we got coming in. And that's one of the things that we're trying to go to, is find out what is coming in and what's going out. I mean, there's been some strange things going on.
Will there be a separate report with the splash, I mean, you know, the treasury report now, it's all mixed together, it looks like.
No, with, everything will be broken down, we'll do, you'll, you'll know what's in the splash, everybody will know, what's in the splash funds, what's in the account, and what's being paid. So, everything will be opened and uploaded, and you can see what is being spent.
Would, would we be able to get the, uh, copies of invoices and checks on the treasury reports when we get them to the city council with our packet, or is that something?
It depends, yeah, it might feel a little bit reaching, but like I said, uh, if, if there's a check run done, I was going to get copies of the checks and who was to, which is basically once a week, and then when that happens, that'll all get forwarded to the council members.
Splash funds are supposed to have its own separate account.
Right, the splash fund has its own separate account.
Certain things, certain things going with that.
Right, that's correct. The splash fund is, is for certain items, and, and the amount that comes in varies.
Yeah, you'll come in.
Right, no, that'll be separated from the general ledger, so that's what we're doing, and that's what we're trying to accomplish.
I understand, I put you to buy a budget every time.
That's okay.
It's mine, oh, but, and that's just, that's, that's a lot of growth.
Yeah. That's fine, that's okay.
I, I have a question, so is Ms. O'Neill resigning as well?
Yes.
So.
She's, I didn't do much.
So, do we have any idea who's going to be the city attorney?
I've been in contact with a law firm already, and I'll be meeting with them probably sometime next week. To find out exactly what they offer and how we can address, because it's, we need a, well, we're going to need a, we're all state lawyer, we're going to need a solicitor for the court, we're going to need a lawyer for the council.
Right.
So, I mean, we, the city administrator, Jack Volte, he did everything. You know, that's.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up, because we have to find ways to please her.
Yeah, well.
And, and don't. Snowball into outrageous consequence.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is going to be difficult, so that's why I was thinking if we had any prospects.
Well, you know, like I said, I have made contact, so we aren't beginning, okay?
My guy in trouble here, Mike, sorry, he wanted to speak up.
I was just asking, uh, who we're going to, if we had any prospects to replace the city attorney, it's.
Has she quit?
She is, she will at the end of the month.
So, that's an additional thing that we're going to have to think about paying for.
Three, three.
Three.
Real estate, solicitor, and the city council attorney.
Yeah, so that, that, that's a dent in city funds.
I got one other quick question, just look at this sheet, I don't like to change anything, but yeah, you see the old mayor voting? You just don't say it on this sheet, I don't mean, I was asking if it's on Dublin or whatever.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I think Mike's name is missing off one of the.
Yeah, I'm not on there either.
Okay. I don't think, no, we're, I don't, I don't have to change it all, but, sorry.
I'll be stuck with it.
Is there anything else you want that budgeting off with it?
You know, that, that's about it, I think, for right now, uh, I'm sure we'll have more discussions on this, uh, because I'm telling you, we really got to get a, uh, into a situation where everybody's not at ten ninety-nine in the city. Um, you know, the, you really got to have your W-two workers here so you can actually be able to control who's doing what, you know, and it just seems to me when there's a lot of ten ninety-nine, people are doing wherever they want.
The other thing too, we're, we're going to be initiating a time block.
Of GMA. What question do you have?
You can.
So.
What does the GMA, we can go.
It's, the, I, I just thought we were going to discuss the voters.
Well, the, well, the thing about the minutes, I need the minutes approved, so I can go to the bank to change the account.
The March minutes?
Yeah.
Or what's the maximum?
The March, so we can approve the March minutes, I can go to the bank and have the account changed to get certain people off and certain people.
We really need to get that done.
Yes, yes.
So do you want to approve the March minutes?
According to the Georgia Municipal Association, we can. You can, uh, take official action at a work session.
I guess you can, if, if you got a problem like this, you can.
Well, according to the GMA, you can take official action. So, if we could vote on the March minutes, we could get that, get that done.
Do I have a motion to accept the March minutes?
Motion.
Good.
Aye.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Okay, the March minutes, and then I can go to the center.
So, once you get these papers, we can do an itemized audit of everything, correct?
All right, there's also the, there's been the yearly audit has been performed, and supposedly next week, they'll have a report. So, next week, I would like to talk to the person who did the audit, so I could find out exactly what, you know, away from the past.
So, are we going to give a copy of that audit?
I would like, if I can, I would, like I said, anything I get, you get.
Those are also uploaded, right, uh, there's a website where they're uploaded in case anybody wants to pull the audit as well. Um, it's through the UGA, so you go on there and we can send you, I thought I had the link somewhere, where they can link on there and see the audit.
We'll get with the finance department and see, and make sure that they're uploading those, and maybe I can get the link and, and put it out there so you can see.
Yeah, I do have a meeting with the GMA, they're coming here Thursday morning to go over what services they perform for the city, and what, you know, I mean.
Sure, baby.
Yeah, if anybody, if you want to come, I don't care, you're more than welcome to show up.
The next Thursday?
This Thursday.
Oh, this Thursday.
Yeah.
What time?
Uh, ten o'clock. You know, so I mean, it's going to be open, if you want to come and ask questions.
Yeah.
It would be nice, you know, not knowing, you know, exactly what they perform and do for us, that, you know.
Supposedly they help a lot of the people, whenever we want to do things, but apparently there's a dollar-for-dollar match for a lot of the grants that they offer and things like that. Uh, I wanted to use, share the resource more last year, but, uh, couldn't have it.
And, and also.
Thursday, yeah, that'll be here.
Well, also, uh, Wednesday afternoon, Jerry Weiss, he's the city planner for Bushden, and he wrote textbooks on it, I mean, with him.
Okay.
With, with an associate that possibly will end up getting the city planner and talk to them about what's the best way to go forward with the city on, on that one.
You're about from Bushden?
He's from Bushden, well, he does Bushden, he does Jefferson, he does quite a few, but he also wrote textbooks on the subject, so, so he's coming in. So, so we have a lot of meetings, so.
So, tomorrow, what time?
Today.
Well, no, he, he'll be here about two o'clock after.
Two o'clock.
And Thursday?
Sorry.
Thursday, yeah, sure.
I guess, uh, the next, Renee, you want to do a live version report?
Yes, I do. For the month of March, we've had twenty-one patrons and checked out fourteen.
Okay, next on the agenda, this is not the question and answer purpose.
What?
It's not the question and answer.
Yeah, no, it's for now.
All right, okay, awesome. Yeah, have them come see me, and we'll come up with plans, thank you.
Okay, so we have representatives in Rochester, DC, CM, about the proposed wedding venue on the ninety-eight acres over here, and so I'd like them, they can have a floor. And they will, I'll let you, after they've done the presentation, will have a question and answer period if possible.
Oh, you can't see it, you all, you all may orientate.
You can, you can, I'm put, you know, you can orientate.
Okay, fine.
Good evening, and thank you for your time tonight, my name is Margaret Sanders Lewis, I'm with Walter's Wedding and Sales. Um, we're a large wedding venue owner and operator, uh, we operate in Texas and Georgia. Um, we, we have come to your city to, um, propose, um, constructing two new venues. So, a little bit about Walter's, we've been in business over twenty years, and we host roughly three hundred weddings a month. Uh, weddings are all we do, let me think about it, weddings are not all we do, special events are all we do, and that's primarily weddings. But sometimes it's baby showers, and Christmas parties, um, from time to time it's the crawl, and sometimes it's the ban banquet, and, um, frequently it's the major breakfast and a few other things like that. But by and large, the staple of our business is weddings. Um, and we've been doing this for a long time, for, I would say, the first, probably twelve, thirteen years, we did venues only, and then we started doing catering with all of our events. And, um, for the last five years, I've also been doing floral takes, photography, and those other types of services that come with it. Um, kind of unimaginable things, some people buy those ser, those additional services, some people don't, um, some people need those for the, for the. So, that's really the nature of our business, we, we do build, um, large upscale facilities, um, you're welcome to look this up online, we own roughly forty venues now. Uh, two of our properties have lodging, um, in the form of like what we call casitas or villas, and they really look like a two-story house with a two, one-bedroom suite on the top floor, and two one-bedroom suites on the bottom floor. So, um, really not very different than the house across the street, it looks very much like that, it's just got, um, four suites, and so there may be, um, five or six of those on a property that is a wedding party and their family can come and stay, enjoy the property, um, instead of just coming in and out. So, um, we do that at some of our, um, properties as well. Um, most of our events are somewhere between, for our weddings, for our, obviously for our other events, it's a much smaller group, but most of our weddings are somewhere between a hundred people and two hundred people. We do have some that are larger, um, at some of our events, but for the most part, that's generally the size of the events regardless of the actual size. Um, so that's a little bit about, um, we do hire locally, we do, um, work with our communities and try to be a good neighbor. Um, I know we've done a good job of integrating ourselves into the communities where we, where we live and operate now, and, um, we, we don't transport our own, you know, our own labor from one place to the next. So, um, if we were to put our venues here, we would also be hiring here, and, um, and, and bringing jobs to the community, and of course, pay our taxes and those types of things. But I think one of the big adds that we do bring is the financial benefits of the community, in that, um, we, we're paying taxes, we're creating sales tax revenue, um, usually a sales tax revenue on, you know, two to three million dollars a year, um, but we're not making a return for free. So, while people come and buy gas, and eat, and pick up candy at the convenience store, they don't live here, they don't eat meal delivered here, they don't eat their dog's paw or, um, whatever, and they don't go to school here. So, there's not a big infrastructure dream while there is a financial benefit for the town. Um, so, um, not to be confused with the fact that it's a for-profit business, and certainly it is a for-profit business, we rent nine chapters, um, but we do think that we are a good asset to the community. And I certainly appreciate you all coming out and giving us an opportunity to tell you a little bit about our project, which is actually just like three minutes away, it's really close, but, but let Bradley do a little more about the venue.
But Bradley's also one with Rochester, DC, CM, out of Gainesville, planner, site planner, engineer for the property. And, uh, again, thank you for your time tonight, to hear to learn more about what we're bringing for you. Uh, just some technical type details, uh, let me start with, my generation, we got married in churches, I don't know about you all, but, uh, that trend has totally, it's changed now, and so I think the growth of, uh, wedding venues of this type, special event venues, uh, has tremendously increased in the past ten, fifteen, twenty years. So, you might be asking, uh, you know, why bring something like this to, uh, to Pendergrass where it's not a, you know, a, a large population, but, uh, I think what most of these venues are looking for, most of these projects are looking for, is a, uh, like a pastoral, uh, uh, setting where there's a, you know, a lot of nature around, has privacy, have an event, a special in that manner. So, what we're asking for tonight, uh, with this proposal, uh, is a resuming for agricultural districts and land commercial district. And, uh, it's, uh, Laura said, there'd be potentially two, uh, special event venues, uh, potentially a boutique type hotel, but we've had a hundred and fifty rooms, uh, if we do a traditional hotel versus a casino, uh, uh, plan that's, uh, within all of them up there. Or possibly a third venue up with the hotel, actually located. Uh, like I said, this is a ninety-eight acre size, which is, uh, larger, I think, than most of their two-rottes, which were thirty-four acres, something of that, uh, something of that size. So, we do always look at, uh, we propose a use, uh, in a, you know, municipality, uh, what their comprehensive plan costs for a certain area, I don't know if all of y'all are familiar with comprehensive plan process, but, uh, this is required by the state of Georgia. Uh, each city municipality has to put some, uh, forward thinking to what they want to, uh, so anyway, ways to future development areas. So, uh, this particular property is in your country living character area, uh, which supports the mixture of uses and purge of preservation, natural, tree canopy, ponds, streams. Uh, so, this specific use is not designated for this area, but we do believe we'll achieve some of the, uh, preservation of not environment, environmentally sensitive areas, especially around the reservoir, uh, you know, preservation of tree canopy, and, um, reduction, uh, and overall, just a reduction of development pressures, uh, for that site. I learned what it, has looked at this site on two other issues for residential developers, um, there are some, uh, issues from a residential development standpoint that prevented them moving forward, but, uh, this seems to be the really, really compatible use for this property. Uh, the access would be from Park Street, we know that may be a bit of concern, um, because of the width of that street, we certainly have to look at, uh, if there's any improvements, it might need to be, uh, there. Water sewer, there is water available, we're working with the Jackson County Park Sewer Authority regarding, uh, access to the sanitary sewer system to wall that road, uh, self-invasion. Uh, there is a jurisdictional stream, uh, on the side, so we would be avoiding any impacts of the stream and from certain property, and of course, uh, all of the development is, uh, situated away from the reservoir, that's, you know, sensitivity, and we're going to add it from residential development. So, we think, uh, we think we have a use and a plan that does preserve, uh, a lot of the property. So, we think, we think we have a use and a plan that does preserve a lot of the property. And that's to be, you know, something that residents in the city should be proud of. Does bring hospitality component to the city, which can drive other, you know, ancillary or related businesses. So, the two venues, just giving some sizes, it would be somewhere between fifteen to eighteen thousand square feet size. Particularly, they include a chapel either, separate chapel building, chapel incorporated into the park building where you would have your function area with seating for dinner or hors d'oeuvres. I think that's probably the basic information that I might share with you. So, I would be glad to answer any questions that you or the mayor and councilman would have.
Do you have an idea like how many people this venue would employ?
Generally, a venue employs about thirty people.
Are these W two employees or ten ninety-nine?
W two employees. We've discontinued the practice of having ten ninety-nines with the exception of, if we're light staffed, sometimes we use a staffing agency. And so for us, that is ten ninety-nine, but they work for the staffing agency. So, but we do try to employ all of our personnel in absence, some kind of shortage. Or particularly, most people don't know this, but October is by far the busiest month of the year for weddings. And sometimes we are hosting weddings until we're just tired of hosting and people get sick or whatever, and so we find a reason to stop them.
So, my other question is, as you said, you do about three hundred a month, three hundred weddings a month. I'm assuming that that's over all of your venues.
No, no, at each one of these, no, I'm just kidding.
And that, this includes the kitchen area, all the food is being prepared?
Yes, sir, it does. And generally, so, for example, on this venue setup, there'll be one large commercial kitchen on site that will take care of both venues. So, they don't each have to have their own. And one of these venues is designed to have an internal, internally built chapel with a large reception hall. And the reception hall is just kind of like this, like a big rectangular building and then the, you know, what a chapel looks like, just like your local church. But the second venue has a freestanding chapel and then.
Was one of these venues going to be like an open air? Is that discussed as you hope it could be closed then?
They'll be completely closed. They do have patio and some of the bar areas open up to the inside and outside. But by and large, especially since there's two facilities there, no one wants to hear someone else, just like our neighbors don't want to hear us and we don't want to hear our neighbors. Our venues don't want to hear each other either. So, pretty much everything stays fairly well contained to its space so that we can protect against that noise. And that's also the reason we keep so many trees and plant additional trees is we don't want lights from the cars interrupting any of the events or our neighbors. So, there's kind of a lot of things that go into that planning.
Would the hotel be open to other people other than, that are in the wedding party? If there is no wedding party, would the hotel would act as a regular hotel if there is rooms available?
Yes, sir. It is, all of our, all of our lodging is open to the public to the extent it's not booked for weddings, which means usually during the week it's open, right? And on all, like Christmas and Thanksgiving, we don't really host very many special events, so it's usually open and available to the public.
Do you open up the facility if like say, maybe around Christmas or Easter, do you open up like to a buffet setup where you have, you know, like an Easter banquet or the Christmas banquet or something like that?
It has happened a few times. It really kind of depends on the community. So, some communities interact with our venues differently than others. And some schools interact with our venues a lot and others don't. It kind of depends on the vibe of the town, frankly.
I've got a couple of questions. Can y'all hear me? Will cooking be on the premises then? Will it be catered?
No, it will be cooked on the premises.
How about liquor?
On the premises.
Okay, how about liquor? Will it be BYOB or will you provide liquor?
So, there is a bar and we serve liquor via our liquor license, through licensed bartenders who serve at the time, so we don't do BYOB then.
Okay. I guess the only problem I have is the traffic channel. You've got one to two hundred people for weddings and?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, that's a lot of traffic for Park Street. And then the neighbors are all on the grid. What plans? Is there a traffic study being done that's something the city would need to do? Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've looked at doing a traffic study necessarily, but we certainly could. I mean, I think statistically, the events, you know, the number of people there is not reflective directly to the number of cars that, you know, most people.
Generally, three to five.
Yeah, there's usually three guests per car on average. So, a hundred and fifty person event, you know, could generate anywhere from fifty to seventy-five cars potentially. And the events are staggered such that, you know, they're not, everybody's not arriving for both venues at the same time. They're staggered.
So, they could be going in and out. And I personally, my house backed straight onto Park Street and I sit in my backyard last day. We get maybe, maybe six cars going because there is no end point. We're not going to destination. But now there'd be a destination, which means we're looking at people who take their walks there every day, in the morning, in the night. That would be interrupting our neighborhood passage. When you start having people driving anywhere between fifteen and fifty cars in one day, that's a lot. And then you've got the ones after the event's over who are running up to Chichi or the gas station or the liquor store to buy whatever they want. So, right now, we don't have people really going anywhere on Park Street after, we should, nine o'clock at night. But you've got these venues coming in and now you're looking at people going and playing at midnight. People who may be playing their music in their cars really loudly. You've got children there that you have to consider, is it a school night? So, the traffic study, I think, is vital. We do have dogs that you have to catch. So, our neighborhood speed limit is fifteen miles per hour. What are we looking at for the speed limit on Park Street? Now, we've got a venue destination and are people going to adhere to that? We don't have enough police officers in our community to send somebody there for each of your events. That's a very valid concern. It's not that I don't want to see commerce come in, but how is it going to affect my neighborhood life with the neighborhood that I bought a house in because it is rural, because it is quiet? And now I'm looking at how strong the possibility to my home. Now I'm not going to be quiet and rural the way I wanted it to be. Yes, we have a fence to the extent of like for a clubhouse, but I've got a spooked dog who, if he gets out, he gets really confused. And we have half the neighborhood trying to catch the boy guy because he doesn't know what to do. And I'm sure I'm not the only one with a pet who like randomly get loose. And we're really diligent about keeping everybody in the neighborhood. It's really diligent about making sure their children are safe, about making sure our camels are safe, about making sure our communities safe. You start bringing in traffic on this little bitty thin road, is that still safe for us? And then we're looking at commerce coming in. And you mentioned that it's going to attract more businesses. Again, that's going to increase traffic throughout the city. How are we going to pay for our law enforcement? We need to know that there's going to be some way that not only do we bring in that extra additional oversight for our city, but that we're going to be able to pay. We're going to need them if you're going to have to work at however many hundred people are coming in per venue. And then you say October is your high volume? You know, just heads up, October has Halloween, there's a lot of children.
It's Halloween everywhere.
But if it's not Halloween next to that, that's in other words. And I'm sure it's going to be beautiful and I'm sure it's going to be great. And you're talking about disappointment for a lot of people. And it's going to be probably wonderful for some of these high school and college students who need that job to buy a car to get to school. I understand that, I know all for that and I'm all for adding commerce and relevant which is the city based on local employment. Absolutely wonderful. But I've also been a project manager in the commercial restaurant equipment industry long enough to know that there's all kinds of permitting, that there's all kinds of traffic issues, that things that the managers don't immediately think about suddenly become a problem. And therein is another question. What is your timeline already like on this? When are you planning on starting? How long do you expect the construction to run? Who are you hiring for your construction? Is it going to be rural, city, county? Is it only for, or even between ninety-nine, that will be subcontracted? So, there are a lot of things there that need to be looked at, I think. The traffic study is one. And I think that the timeline for this, how, how long, I, how long are my neighbors going to have to listen to construction again? Because we had to listen to it. That was one of the first houses that was built. So, we had to listen to our construction. We had to listen to construction with the projects we presented. Now we're going to be listening to more construction. How is that going to affect our happiness? So, a timeline, having a timeline, even if it's just an estimate and it's going to go earlier to start or later to end, but you're having that general idea would be very helpful.
I have three quick questions.
Sorry.
I have a couple of questions, yes. So, from my understanding with wedding experiences, y'all hire off-duty police officers, correct?
We do.
Okay.
Anytime there's alcohol being served in the premises. So, we don't necessarily have officers there for the breakfast or whatever.
But when alcohol is served, do you have law enforcement? You're usually local and you're usually offered that way.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My second is, I hear there's concerns about walking down there. That's a lot of land. Is there any way that we could potentially talk about doing some sort of walking trail through there on, in, in the property? Because I.
We have to, we have to, we're, we're, that's one of the things we're working on. But we have to get approval from CSX.
Correct.
There is plans of putting a path around that whole field.
Correct.
As a walking trail.
Correct.
But like I said, we have to get approval from CSX to do that.
Correct.
So that way the people would be off this street.
Correct. So that puts your, one of your.
We're a lot of those to that.
Okay. Well, that puts one of her concerns away, that it's a safe place to walk. And then my second question is.
Sorry.
My second one was the.
Did you say third?
Third.
Third.
Third, third.
So, are your venues owned or they made Walters weddings? Or are they made different venues?
Well, we could go in and look at your website. If you go to Walters Wedding and Stage, you will find all of our venues, but they do have names.
Okay. And then they're all owned by you?
They are all owned by us, they are all operated.
Owned by Marriott or?
They are not operated by Marriott. We do not.
Right, this is Walters Wedding and Stage.
We are arrogant and that's the thing, we're the best in the business.
Sure.
We're all by anybody. Do what we think we do best.
Sure.
So, another just point of interest is it takes about fourteen months, fourteen to sixteen months. But by the time we have drawings that we submit for permits, to get permits, get, and get construction completed, we generally are planning to start hosting weddings in sixteen to eighteen months. So, that's kind of our, our timetable. And we can hire a local general contractor. We don't subcontract it. I don't know if they're ten ninety-nines or who paints the buildings because we don't know the painters in your local community, but we trust a good general contractor to do that.
How many weddings do you do per day? Their maximum, what's the time, time limit that you won't allow?
So, it does vary. By and large, most of our facilities, it's one wedding per day per facility. And so, that, we say bride, but really it's whatever the client, whoever the client is, gets access to the building somewhere between ten AM and noon. And they get to stay all day. And events start, for us, an event starts when the ceremony starts. So, ceremony times vary between four and six PM. And so, like in a facility like this, one would probably start at four, four-thirty. One would start about six. So, the four-thirty event gets inside. If, assuming they decided to have an outside wedding, they get inside, they get finished. But we also have all of their traffic put where it's going to be. And then the other event would start about an hour and a half later. And then, of course, rotate to reception.
I remember my third question. On your diagram, the two buildings on the, on the right-hand side.
Event buildings?
Yes. Approximately how far will those be away from the homes in the neighborhood?
Far away.
Yeah. We'd call for a fifty-foot buffer and a seventy-five-foot setback. So, it'd be a minimum of seventy-five feet, which fifty would be a buffer, a vegetated buffer.
So, be about seventy-five feet from that.
These are actually shown farther away. And that would be from the property line, so the house is presumably or twenty or thirty feet within, you know.
Going back to it. So, now you could possibly have two weddings going on in one day. You have one at one facility, one at another. And then the weddings could be outside as opposed to the channel, but all the reception would be inside.
That's right.
So, can I ask a question?
So, can I ask a question?
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. Open works.
You have two weddings, and you're having a wedding there. And you're asking, you're going to build a four-story, hundred and fifty, two-hundred unit motel. How do you make a profit? But you're only going to have some venues, Saturdays and Sundays, that you have to be focusing there. So, four, five, six, seven, a month, maybe, I don't know, maybe ten. Patrick, what do you do with the, how do you think for the book sales during the week? I mean, where are you going to get the courage to pay for it? How do you get a profit? And do you have a motel at your other? Yeah, I think you just did, I didn't do your book.
Right. So, we have no hotels. So, we only have high-end facilities, so we wouldn't have that.
But your plan says you're going to build a four-story motel?
We might have a hotel and we might have that one, but from there, there will be no motel.
That's not what the application, application says, a motel.
I think that's a hotel. Okay. Things will work. Okay. So, it is, this is only one request, it's a request for the possibly a motel. If they could have two hundred and fifty and two hundred, that's what the application says. It could also be our standard villas, which is follow-up, we're leaning more towards, because we like that model better.
That's not what your application.
You're right, that is not what our application says. It doesn't.
But applications can change.
But applications can change. And, and you're asking me what I intend to do, so I'm just telling you what I intend to do. I wouldn't be the first developer to oversell their property so that they have less facilities. But it, I don't know what kind of lodging we're going to put there yet because we've got to hit the venues there and operational. And we probably build the lodging as part of the pace too. So, it's a little more difficult for me to say exactly what I can use the right thing. But I can tell you, at properties where we have lodging, we let them stay empty on Monday. They do say this day.
I have a two-hundred-roomed hotel doing that. And I, I'd picture this eventually as a student's day, a other week. That's my home, I haven't, no.
Ma'am.
I mean, how do you keep it profitable?
That would never be a good solution. Doesn't, but no, yeah, I'll put that in my name.
Feel free to look at all those things, yeah. And so I'd Google Walters Wedding and Stage.
I was going to say, you came up with flashbacks, correct? Do you have any pictures of any of the properties that you have?
I can.
Do you see them?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind?
I don't.
Well, while she's getting that, can I ask a question to whomever we want? The H O A over there, I'm probably about ninety percent of us live over there right now. I want to make sure that your two venues at between four and six, possibly nine, maybe ten, eleven. seven, eleven o'clock at night are not going to interrupt our families over there. That's our big thing over there that, you know, we did buy in the country to where we are trying to, you know, not have, and we'll never just say the big high event, the hotels, hotels over there. We just want to make sure that Park Street, if you're going to use Park Street, this is, this is our big thing. And this is where I believe that all of us in Walnut Road kill that. One, we would like for you all, as the builder, to request a traffic study.
Yeah, let me.
I've got like four things, so go ahead.
I'll let you. Traffic studies typically do two things. Trip generation, which, you know, tells you how many vehicles are going to be coming. We kind of already know that. There's a, uh, guidelines that the traffic engineer issues. It's going to vary because you tend to sit up from there, real life experience has been. Look, if you trip, uh, generation, it gives you trip distribution, which means when the vehicle exits your facility or comes into your facility, which way did it turn to get in. In this case, there's no options.
Right.
So the trip distribution is not an issue. Third, it gives you, uh, intersection.
Intersections is not a factor for it. But it, it is standard deviation or something like that. It look really hot. But when you look at the, the factor of ingress, degress.
Well, I was, I was going to get to that. So trip generation, trip distribution, intersection improvement.
Right.
So if you have an intersection where, you know, you're putting so many left turn movements in that you need a dedicated left turn lane, that might be the case. So what, what they do with, uh, this gentleman's comment is determine a level of service. Level of service is the industry wide standard for how much delay somebody has getting through a certain point within that, uh, route of where your traffic is. You're going through a company.
Right.
So they would take, uh, traffic counts prior to and after and determine if that level of service has diminished from where it was. Now, you might have a longer delay, but that may not kick in to a lower level of service category. Typically in the state of Georgia, anything level of service D or above, deemed acceptable. So the thing that, you know, it might be an A now, level of service A, which is the highest, um, level to, you know, that, that with the least amount of delay. But the thing that you're going to get below a D, uh, would be one or four percent, probably not likely with that number. You have, uh, basically.
Right.
But we can, we can talk about that.
No, it's, it's fine. I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to get ahead of the rain, just so we know, because just the caveat on her comment about the Park Street.
Right.
You know, we would like, if, if it did come through and, and get approved, you know, we would like for the developer to actually widen and make Park Street on your dime. I don't think that the city or the county or even our HOA even has a thought in that. Um, or, and God bless you, you can get this done, but if you could request CSX. Because these requested and denied, and requested and denied, and our builder even got requested denied, either a second attempt or, you know, something will be effective. I, and I know how the crossover is on each road is supposed to happen. I'm not. You know, I'm not sure.
I, I would play the chance of CSX give us another act or.
It's going to be like the pipe on the lottery today. That's not going to happen.
Yeah, she probably got both.
Yeah. So that, and that's our big thing is that we just want to make sure, because it is going to increase our traffic, it is going to increase the heavy trucks that are coming in to deliver your food or to deliver whatever needs to be figured or whatever. We just want to make sure that whatever is coming through Park Street in front of our neighborhood and not interrupting the backyards of our neighborhood in our pool area for one. We want to make sure that that's not going to happen. That's the big thing. And if you go to venues that goes to our neighborhood, it doesn't have a point to be a factor for our, our homes. Because we do have elders, we do have low end homeowners and whatnot. We just want to make sure that that's going to be taken care of at the same time.
It's not. Or.
Right.
With.
Well, I mean.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
And that's the big change. I mean, I have a very important question trying to get out now. That's the whole, first, third, and fourth car that went through the house. I think in the middle of the bar.
That we have the best people.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll watch, if you'll turn your attention right here to Supreme, they're going to show what the vision is for this. If you've already looked up, what do you think?
Can I say something besides?
Okay.
I have a little request on the fire department here. Um, as we've heard all about with excess and degress. Are you talking a four story apartment or hotel?
Potentially.
Potentially, okay. But right now I have a, I have a plan to cut a four story. And it takes years to get one. You already order it today, Brian. Obviously that's a constraint. We would like to set the ambulances. If you're going to have venues, you're going to look for access and, and, you know, degress or ambulance or hard trial.
Sure.
The other thing is if you can start putting all this traffic in there, and we've already discussed what we're going to do if there's an accident going in Walnut Road. Because if there's an accident above CSX, you know as well as I do, it's shut down for four hours. So you can't cross the tracks.
That's right.
We're, we're looking at, would you consider all those aspects or will you merely consider a four story?
I'm sure. Thank you.
I'd like to think something as well too on, on that note. So if this property gets owned as a commercial, I mean that it is, if it is a commercial property, they can build a warehouse on it as well.
Well, my, my understanding is your plan, commercial district is site plant specific.
Right. That's what I was asking. Because I would much rather, if that's how the road that we're going to go down, I'd much rather have a wedding venue than another warehouse. Especially right there.
Or a sub.
Traffic.
Or another two hundred.
Or another apartment complex. Because I'm, I'm done with the apartment.
Right.
So I'd much rather have that on that. Maybe move the houses further away from the fence to accommodate for, for them. But in all reality, this is probably the best solution to that land. Because otherwise it's going to be turned into another warehouse or another townhouse or another apartment complex. And it seems like y'all are more than willing to work with us on, on a lot of things that we want to see done. Um, I do understand for y'all, because I, I see it all the time, my pastor. But at the same time, you aren't going to be doing weddings at six thirty in the morning. So traffic should be kind of.
Or. We didn't say it's a big wedding day.
But your, but your hotel's going to be active, Brian. Is that what I heard? You're going to allow the hotel.
Our hotel is open.
I would, I would right there have the small cars and eighteen wheelers coming in.
But also your, your facility here in Atlanta, is it Sugar Hill, right? Ashton Gardens?
It is.
Okay. Very familiar with Ashton Gardens. And I've seen the thousands of views, but I also hope everybody here will Google Ashton Gardens. That will give you a tremendous amount of peace of mind already. And I'd like to see this presentation, yes.
Excellent. So this is, um, and, and just so that you do know, almost all of our plan developments that we've negotiated, we negotiate limitations. There can never be a gas station there. There can never be a warehouse.
Right.
That we, oh.
If it, my, my whole point is if, if, if that land to be sold, I would prefer it to be something that's less invasive than other things. Because we all know, out of everything that's happened here in the last five years, there's a lot of things that can be extremely invasive. So.
Unfortunately, it's landlord and other.
Correct. Correct.
So here are a few of our existing venues, and then I'll show you the plan for the, the venues here.
Okay.
So this one has, just so you know, single family residences within seventy feet of all sides of this property and apartments behind it. This, um, this venue is in Dallas, and it also has, um, neighbors on all sides.
Can you, can you show, when you're showing these, can you tell us which one is the venue and which one is the hotel? Or are these all?
I'm going to show you all venues.
Perfect.
Show you all venues. Um, this is just a variety of the different looks that our venues have, so you can have some kind of idea of what they look like. Here's an outdoor ceremony site. Here's the back of, a rear view of one of our, um, venues with a ceremony area.
And you're making consideration of architectural, like, here, you're not going to put like something that looks like Houston, Texas. Really? Because that's. We don't need anything like that.
This is what, this is what the venues are like.
That is beautiful.
So, um, we own this venue in Houston, Texas, and a modified version of that is exactly what we plan to put here. This has an integrated chapel inside, um, the building with the, um, hall. And so you can see it here. The, the portion of the building has essentially the stripes. It looks like go through, that's the reception hall, and then as the long building is the chapel. And there's a bridal room suite, assorted kitchen, and the assorted other, um, elements. This is what the, um, interior of the hall looks like. Oh, I don't know what to say. I'm not very good at this. Um, this is, um, a patio area with a, with a bar area. And this is the chapel. And so this is one of the venues that's planned for here. Venue two. Um, this one is, has a separate chapel, not an integrated chapel, so it has multiple buildings, um, a, a large reception hall, and, um, it does have a, a, a small second story where the bridal suite is, and it, so the bridal suite overlooks, um, everything. And then two separate buildings, one houses the chapel and one houses the groom's suite. So designed to look like this, where you see the reception hall and the chapel at the same time. And this is what the groom's suite looks like. This is the inside of the groom's suite. This is the foyer of the.
It's not.
Oh. It might no longer be connected.
So, yeah, my daughter got married in Ashton Gardens, and it realized that.
Oh, wow.
This property.
It's great indoors.
Yeah. It's fine. Nobody would need a pool.
Yeah.
This on Park Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it is a driveway, okay? It was built as a driveway because the plantation house was in, for the current occupation tax. And when the gate is open, people drive down this like this, they're, they're trying out for the quarter mile.
Yes.
Okay, when I back out, I live in a little blue house with the gate. When I back out, with my gate, my car barely sits out of the road. And my car's asleep. So somebody comes flying down there, and I'm trying to back out. They're like, have a note, and I'm saying, he's, you know, or, she's dead. I fostered little dogs, having forbidden one of my little dogs to get out. You know, I did everything I can to keep them in time to take everything. Get them up.
True.
That is a lane, okay? That's Park Street. But the problem is when they were built in Walnut Road, eighteen wheelers were driving down, loading vehicles, timber block, lumber, saw, uh, concrete, uh, truck, dumpster, all this stuff, driving down Park Street when they had the entrance, the railroad. So my question is, this kind of thing, my drive, this kind of thing, my driveway, whenever the trucks, and I'm forced to drive, like, everybody, oh, it's too rough, let me go to the railroad crossing. I'm stuck driving on it, okay? People don't want to be driving on hot whole roads, they're going to take another eighty minutes.
We can have the police. We can have, we can have the police take care of the section of the Park Street that you live on with, you know, no tractor trailers, you know, no trucks. Well, well, you know, well, the driver goes home with a couple hundred dollar ticket, you know, to go get his own, you know.
Why do they have to use Park Street? Why can they not use the railroad crossing that already saved?
They would have to. That's, that's the problem.
But it's obviously dated.
Real estate, not a, we'll try to keep it shut.
And it's a record, right? Park Street was really a great one. It's been, it's been, uh, early, uh, the different stations. That's the black and red little ones and all of that. But that's back when cars weren't as big as they are, and there wasn't fourteen foot Ferrari, Ferrari.
You can't drive ten cars.
But.
The same way.
That's the way it used to be, bound free.
Bound free.
Isn't any wise.
Yep. But given your concerns, it's obviously you're going to, you're going to take care of the beautification, because you want to have a certain appearance and presentation for your pre wedding. So that will take care of your, your entrance. But in addition to that, it will also.
If you take, if you take the, uh, gate down, which was asked to be there to cut down traffic, right?
Yes.
Are you thinking you're going to take that anyway?
No.
Because that.
So you're not going to use any of this Park Street right here. You're just going to use the Park Street. The thing I was trying to say is.
And whatever, yes, whatever regards to.
I want it right.
That's my understanding, that it's just going to be, if I'm going to make that entrance down, you're using the Walnut Road.
As the fire department says, if there's a disaster, something, I'm asking them to open it. If there's a train stop or rent, whatever, that whole thing, they would open the gate, and they did. When a train stopped, they did open the gate. And there was a date left over a whole week, and I called, and they, hey, Ray, take two of them, it's been open all week, and she had to write it on the book. It's because, you know, you're not nervous, it's all, it's got these cars within my, and you're like, oh, Jesus.
Yeah. But that, that, that would only be opened up by emergency people.
I might see that in writing.
We don't do that.
As part of the, as part of the, um.
But that'll be, that'll be part of, that'll be part of kind of business.
But that.
It won't be, it won't be your responsibility. That'll be kind of business's responsibility.
Yeah, but they'll, which is that, you know, some of y'all's apartments, that's going to end up having to be upgraded.
Yeah. Yeah. I hit my neighbor's name. I hit my neighbor's name.
It's going to take.
Oh, please, one down here.
Here.
And that's.
If you're trying to extend that road or expand the road to standards that the state has, if you're going to handle it, it's going to take property both sides of the park road.
It's all.
If they go through your front door, it's going to take.
So this one. Give him one time.
So we're all. We don't.
No worries. We're currently on the agenda, or is it, I think, the twenty seven, twenty nine. We would love to still come, but I think y'all need to approach.
It's going to be good. Right.
I'm still down, and I have not asked the lady. We're not that stressed, but I'll have our.
Hot mic, here's my, I believe from what you're, the, uh, we're here, sign of a walking front.
Let's, let's, keep, keep this space.
Not over. But that's, that's.
On the right.
Yeah.
Going down between the tracks, between the tracks and.
Right.
On the right, going down, between the tracks, between the tracks and right.
So, so we're going?
Right, but it has to be a way to make, I think, that, uh, the, uh, so we have.
Front door, like, y'all just, you're, 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 you're.
Okay, again?
What happens to getting selling up? If you went to have a four-story hotel.
Well, it's under security.
Being there, okay? And you know what's gonna happen? You're gonna have so many people going into it, and then we're gonna have a bigger problem. That's by concern, it's not the venue itself, it's.
The security.
Okay? I, you know, I don't want a four-story hotel.
That's the second phase, first of all.
Well, it doesn't matter, you gotta have it in writing. We all know, we all know, it happens when we, they were to do something, right? And that, that's what the plan states, but it went across the street. Where, where's the door?
We're trying to avoid by doing.
Where's the door?
This is why we're trying.
That's what I, I avoid that.
I understand your concern, but there's people who have looked here a lot longer than they have, that sit on this side of the property, that have, have been here for generations.
Yes.
Okay? What about that? What about that? Why, why, why is it closed here? Why not shit up the wall?
That, that, that's why I asked about the spacing between, but my second thing is, that road has to get, that, that, that road's gonna be accessible either way, whether they build a, a wedding venue or not, that road is gonna be traveled down, he's absolutely for it. It, 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 whether you do it now or later, it's gonna have to be done, just like Mountain Creek Drive. It, it's not sustainable, we're a small community, I understand that, but this is gonna help keep the community smaller, as opposed to putting townhouses there, more apartments, or a warehouse. We can talk, like, like she just said, we can work with her on the plan, as far as the spacing between the venues and the homes, correct? Like, I, I, I'm sure a hundred feet extra wouldn't kill you, right? On ninety-three acres.
And we just want to make sure we're, we're giving lots of grief back in the way to the water as well.
Right, so, so, so you're willing, so nothing has even been submitted yet, this, this is all just hypothetical right now.
Well, there isn't a complication now, and, and that's where her concern is.
Right.
It does say four-story hotel, so, you know, yeah. So what was the.
I would prefer a three thousand dollar residence there.
Well, I was told they.
There's people that stay at houses, and they're not good in.
They just went three hundred acres behind my house and told me that they were gonna put thirty houses on fifteen acre, on, on fifteen acre lots. There's ten houses built, and then they just stopped. So, I mean, this, this, what?
So you could hear them, to make a good decision for the people, the city of Pendigress. What I'm stating is, to listen to your constituents here, listen to what they're saying, you have to, you know.
So, if you know that taking the properties, build, uh, a stay home zone, have about fifteen at the tops on that hundred acres.
That's what I was.
And then you ain't got no traffic to really worry about, you got a wedding venue coming in there, that's best line of business, property, you won't have to worry about the street here, play it, you just gotta find the right person to do it.
But with this, it's not the right person to buy.
Right. That could be very tough.
Correct.
With the wedding venue, our property taxes will draw, but with new homes, they will not.
They will rise, especially with the market value on a house.
Looking at, as far as what's going in, what's not, I have over the side of the wedding venue is preferable response to developing that land, for so many reasons. You just have to take into consideration what the drawbacks are, and fix that before the wedding venue goes in.
And they're responsible. And, and, and they're willing to work with us and listen, but I'm just saying, I, I'm pretty sure everybody here is upset, everybody is angry, they're building like crazy over here. Everybody moved here because it was a small town. I mean, I, I know several people that I, I talked to before I even got on the council. I, I know, I understand what, what people want, but at, at some point, that land is gonna be sold, and nobody's gonna have a say to what, what it turns into. At least at this point, they're willing to work with us, they're willing to listen, and.
And it's not corporate. Well, like, if it's corporate, it's put it on the area, it's working, it's, it's.
It's a small business, which is, which is what Pendigress funded.
Y'all will have to play in my field then, like, y'all, yeah.
That's, that's correct. I read, that's why they're here taking, taking questions and answering them for you.
My question, my question is more, city, so we said through several meetings, we thought, so, Chris, when Bill's up, from our subdivision, are y'all finally gonna go back and, and get the state involved and look at the roads and actually, I mean, before they said you couldn't put a crosswalk, cause they didn't want to get state involved in that state road, so, like, are y'all gonna go back, if, if you want to go on this, do you get everybody else involved and look, I mean, Bradleyton, and you said Sugar Hill, they did a great job building the infrastructure prior to building everything, Mountain Creek is a source of life, I mean, I, it drives me crazy, I couldn't get a truck in your house before I really could get a truck in your house.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be great, I.
Well, I think that's the point, the bill would make it better, I think, but you're trying to make the community like it should have been, that the infrastructure was considered before things are going in. Now we have a big discussion about if you, which could be a very good thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we are, we are having a barn, just to make sure, they were talking about infrastructure and what was buried, the name for it, strong. The simple fact is, you know, all the complaints about all the, all the roads, you know, the way, the way it is, it's community, so it's deep, perhaps, real village, closer, but it's not optimal, you know, to what we want. But the fact is, it is what it is now.
Right.
So now all we need to do is to take things of good opportunities and try to build these, those opportunities, put in the, for it.
Right.
They're trying to keep green space. I'm sure, and part of this, like, again, we could have conversations about how can you help us build a park, or how can you help us walk trails, how can you help us through this? You're gonna have a beautiful facility that's gonna be famous, part of the time. Now, there are all kinds of lovely stuff about using it for, make your trails or whatever, but I'm sure that can be worked out. So why wouldn't we go with something like that? Then wait for a developer to come up for ten acres, five, or fifteen acres, five, and we doesn't need to acquire that now.
Right.
So, for all this in Pendigress and Jackson County doesn't support that.
Right.
Okay? So we're just.
We're working.
I would say, it's, it's.
Yeah, Laura, if you can, it's like, being involved in homeowners, and you're gonna be up here on, on the city council at the end of the month, if you can get, with your subdivision, and maybe come up with a list of concerns and questions, so we don't end up with, you know, a little bit of a chaos, mounting, you know, shouting matches and all, so we, you know, get something that's more concise, that we can get in, and.
But if I'm involved in growth, I'm looking for somebody to help me with this.
Right.
And this gave me.
Well, that's what, that's what we're talking about.
Gee, gee, on top of the, gee, screw it up, and allow the property out there to be closed, but they promised y'all all the growth is gonna be good, and it has easy ability to do that, it doesn't do, basically, like, just like they live.
I mean, even if we have an entrance to where we were just talking, um, that, even if it was like, wide enough to do either a right me turn or a left me turn, especially for our bus drivers, my, God bless our bus drivers, we have eight buses that come in that neighborhood every morning and every afternoon, it's a, it's ridiculous, it's eight, it's eight buses. There's already, there's already, perhaps, we just, we just.
And you know, they, they, it's illegal for that bus to turn in.
No.
To that place, but they're gonna be back up all month, we not, we don't do that.
We're, we're looking at.
So we can.
Stress, making sure that the road is taken care of, and then your concerns, or, or you just don't want it at all.
Is that here, uh, Brad, is that, is that, is that, is that.
I don't think there should be, you took a, I mean, athletic, we, 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 we.
Man, she just, she just told us as well, that all of the music will be inside, so you will not be able to hear it.
There is, there's, there's music, you can have it, but not.
Away from the, away from.
But, 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 they have music inside.
I would think they have.
Well, it's, it's not like, it's not like, it's not like. Well, that's, that's.
I know it's back, it's, 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 it's,